Good evening, welcome to the November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen evening of the Newberry Planning Board. My name is Pete Nichols.
Leslie Matthews.
George Morris.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
And we will be signing off tonight's meeting with the parents by Allen D'Angelo, seventy-eight Elm Street. A continued discussion regarding requests to replace exterior siding and trim on property subject to preservation restriction. Lord George, sir.
Do you want me out? All the old ones here.
Yeah, but we're still in Queens, so if you wanna come over here.
Okay.
And you just identify, of course, who you are and all that sort of stuff.
Allen D'Angelo, seventy-eight Elm Street, Byfield. Our stance is the same as it was before. We would like to use the material that was on the building permit. I was hoping that you had a chance to review the material. Hoping maybe this can allow us to continue to finish.
Contractor?
Yes, Justin Kelly.
Justin, let's come up to you. Just say that by yourself.
Justin Kelly, Justin Kelly, contractor.
Spot, okay, there you go. So, Justin, I understand you had a conversation with our contractor about some modification materials, did you talk like that?
I did, it was at the time trying to stay on our original schedule, seeing if there was something that could be decided upon without waiting two weeks.
Why don't you tell them what your discussion was?
The discussion was at that point for speed sake was because we already started PVC trim continuing with that since we weren't gonna rip that down, changing the hardy siding if that was unacceptable to wood siding.
Okay, so, and how did that discussion go? Did you say that that was something that you liked? When were we looking for it?
It was something we proposed with hopefully, and it's a shame we didn't understand that we could have brought this up at the last meeting to stay on our original schedule. We proposed that is a quick way to continue on with work. It was then our understanding after speaking with Martha that obviously no decisions could be made until we were back at the meeting.
Right, right, and did you articulate that the PVC was gonna stay?
Those stuff that was already installed.
So you're in the impression that that's gonna stay?
It was my understanding from what you said, what you've already done, we won't have you take down for our last meeting.
Who said that?
I believe you did at the beginning of the meeting.
I don't think I said that nothing would be taken down.
You said, "We won't go backwards from what we've already done." It was my understanding if it's in the minutes, that was my understanding.
What I'll do is Martha, so we'll have to take a look at the recording just to articulate, to clarify what was articulated.
Mm-hmm.
If that was what was articulated, I was not speaking to the board to say that what was done is going to be, is what's gonna stay.
I understand.
PVC is not fitting with the character of a house and a preservation restriction is.
Mm-hmm.
So, so the board's kind of been put into an awkward position because something's happened and now we have to figure out how to make a solution to this, to the situation. I think wood siding makes great sense. I would think you could probably use the slot somewhere else.
They'll take it back for a thirty percent restocking thing.
Okay, so it can't be used on any other projects that you might have to cover?
No, no.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate.
Yep.
Again, we didn't create the, you know, the situation, we're just trying to negotiate through. Now, the, if we, if we agree to wood siding, we have to figure out what's gonna happen with trim.
Correct.
And with, what are the NPs called?
Clad boards.
Clad boards.
Mm-hmm.
So, help us with that, this discussion process.
Well, we'd given in our last material packet when we were here, last examples of the trim that has already been installed, showing it is matching the original trim exactly, however, it obviously is different material. So, we proposed if it sounded in our last meeting like the hardy was what there was, the biggest problem that you guys had with it. So, our proposal was to continue with PVC trim because there's already a bunch installed and continue with that and then as a compromise to try to make the board happy, change it to all wood siding.
Not making me happy.
Well, nobody's happy.
Yeah, nobody's happy about it, I'm telling you this. So what I have before me is a ninety-nine page document from the standards of the Secretary of Interior standards on rehabilitation with the protocols as to what you should use, what you should use. And I tried to, did I get a, did I get a, did I get a feedback?
Whole ninety-nine, very interesting.
Okay, so, help me with your interpretation of what the, what you wanted.
Well, what you're thinking from what I read is it's wood siding. That's restoration from the Department of Interior, the National Parks Service ministers. And you can talk with them or you can talk with them, but right now it's wood.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't, they don't really allow anything if the wood is available, which it is.
Mm-hmm.
In the same type and style.
That's pretty much the same, you know, what the description is to replace with.
Like materials.
Like materials.
Unless materials are unavailable.
Correct.
So, that's the standard that we're being held to because we have to follow the standards of this. We didn't make this, we're, we're asking you to. So, I would think that wood would be available.
For siding, yes.
And for everything, right?
For everything, everything is available.
So.
Let me ask you this, if you plan to use clad wood siding, when you get it painted, is it gonna be pre-painted or is it?
It'll be pre-primed and then that was, it was why we called immediately after the meeting to make that compromise because that PVC had already been installed to continue on with the schedule where at that point everything, the PVC gets painted just like wood and that's its beauty, it looks exactly like wood, but rock resistant. Trying to stick with that schedule was because knowing that if we did go with that, we would still need to paint to protect. The PVC is bulletproof, the pre-primed pine that we would use as siding does need paint to protect it. We're trying to get that done obviously before it got too cold. We might be able to get through the winter without it, it would just obviously be unpainted for the winter.
Yeah, and that might not be good for the primer.
Oh, it's not good for anything, but it, obviously, we need to close up just because weather.
I'm not saying you have to do it, but it might be better to stay with the tie back for the winter and then hit it in the spring. Paint doesn't really work very well on cold weather.
It doesn't, we need, it's New England, so it could be fifty next week for all we know. It's, we're, we need to get it closed up regardless because there's wind going through. The insulation we did is blown cellulose, there's still air for infiltration everywhere. So it absolutely needs to be closed up, tie back won't hold. And that's what we're here to see what we have received.
I'm gonna ask for a little clarification as far as the requests that you've put in to, for your building permit. You've checked off it's repairs, so to remove and replace the siding, insulate where needed, the sheathing repair where necessary. Are windows being replaced as well?
None at this point.
None at this point, okay.
And the storm windows have come down to facilitate the replacement of the trim, so the storm windows are still down, single pane windows with broken glass all over the place.
What windows you have in there? I noticed some like black windows, odd trim.
On one side, that was done a couple of years ago because the windows on that side, which is most of the pictures of the siding that I submitted, were of that side. Those windows were in such disrepair that I had in an emergency call, not even Justin, this was a couple of years ago. The windows were literally crumbling, like you, the glass panes were just falling out. So I called and had those windows custom made to match the nine over six that it is, but they are clad in aluminum and they're dark. They came in the wrong color. I came home from work, they were supposed to be white and match. I came home from work and they were browns. I didn't hate the way it looked, so I just let it stay instead of having them taken out and put back in, I would have had to wait another six weeks.
The two high windows on the south side are still wood?
No, those were done, those were done immediately when we moved in.
Okay, the correct color?
No. Actually, it was the, it was the attic windows that were done as soon as we moved in and those were the ones that came in wrong. So I left them. And then when we did the first floor once a couple of years ago, I had them match the brown. Follow me?
Leslie just brought up the preparing report, how this, you move and replace siding, that's pretty straightforward. Insulate where needed, you insulated the entire house, right?
Yes.
Okay, so where you need.
It was replace sheathing, isn't it?
No, 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 insulate where, where needed, that's what this says.
Anywhere that wasn't already insulated, right?
So, the whole house replaced and insulated?
Except for the areas.
There was one little section that was already insulated.
And then sheathing repair where necessary, how much sheathing had been repaired?
Surprisingly, not a ton, the, it was in better shape than houses of that age that I usually come across.
So, the difficulty here, and I hope I said the words correctly, if I don't, please feel free to assist me. You're the stewards of a landmark. And the intention when you take over being a steward of a landmark to maintain the historical character is for generations to come. And that's part of the responsibility of this type of property. And that's kind of how we have to direct this.
Okay, however, when I bought that house, the original steward of the restriction didn't do what the restriction said he was going to do.
I understand that the individual that you pick up the property from may or may not have done it, but your responsibility when you assume the property was to.
My assumption of the property was that that work was done as the restriction says it was to be done, rehabilitated, which it was not rehabilitated, it was painted.
Okay, we're here now, we're here now, we're trying to figure out what to do with PVC, which is not fitting with the character of a house of this, this character.
With like kind, it's the interpretation of like kind.
With materials unavailable, 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 wood is available, okay, wood is available.
It is.
It could be done.
Mm-hmm.
And I would, I'm going to have to ask the historical commission to weigh in on what they think should happen because I need, I need their insight, I don't do the historical preservation.
Why do you need their insight?
Because they're, they're the, they're the agency that this town looks to, to maintain houses of interest and of historical importance. That's their role in this community, okay?
He already gave his opinion last time, right?
Clearly, but they haven't admitted it's a board, they're meeting on the twenty-first. I'm not trying to postpone this, I'm trying to get directions to what to do.
Mm-hmm.
If I interpret just what this document says, you're in wood, you're in the land of wood, and that's it.
When that once again is a guideline, yeah?
Right, and it says materials are available, wood's available, it's unproblemable, okay? And again, I didn't create this, I'm just.
I understand.
But you also have the ability to make a decision, I mean.
You don't wanna ask that question right now.
I know, I'm just saying, but you, you don't, you can make a decision based on what's right. Everyone who drives by the house is grateful for the work that we've done. We have preserved the house, we have done everything we can do to improve the quality and preserve the history of the house, which is exactly what we're trying to do by using these materials which look from the street exactly the same.
Same way a window that they replace now, they make you use, every historical site is gonna make you use a Marvin or a series that's clad that is using modern materials but looks like it isn't. It's, it's part, there's only three windows allowed in every historical.
I can appreciate the windows, I really can. I, I'm hung up in the role of the board right now.
Yep.
That's where I'm hung up.
I understand.
My issue with what happened the last time is when you asked for clarification from the chairman of the historic commission. He said, "In no uncertain terms, we will never approve modern building materials." Now, to me, that.
So what, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is I'd like to hear from the board.
Could we have done that in the past two weeks?
The board meets on the twenty-first.
Okay.
That's what the board needs, unfortunately.
But you, you're not required to get their input on this, they are not the stewards of this agreement, the planning board is.
And if the planning board wants to look to somebody for advice, we're gonna look to them.
But this is the only house in Newberry that the planning board has this power over.
And trust me, I'd rather not. Okay? Because I, I don't wanna be in a confrontational situation, I really don't. Again, we were put into a situation that we're back into a blight here. Something happened, we were caught off guard, we didn't know what was going on, we found out about it was dropped on our last, on our last meeting. And I can understand, understand your frustration, but our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility is to follow the guideline, that's what we're supposed to do. And I have an attorney to my right that's, that's, that I've asked.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, that I've asked an opinion to, and he's telling me something. So I'm getting direction, I'm asking another board member, and she's the group direction as well. And the direction is kind of saying, "You have to really think about wood."
And it's, it's supposed to be, once again, that being a guideline, not a set of laws or rules. It's supposed to be discretionaries for you to make pragmatic decisions based on the information that you have.
Right, and you know.
So that, that was our compromise of saying continue with one, then reduce the other.
And talking with, with town planner, you know, you know PVC, you know, of, 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 of components, it's gonna have wood, it's, it's, I'm sure, that makes sense. It does, you know, because that's gonna be a difficult area to control. But I have PVC in my house, I look at the corner of it and I say, saying to myself, "Why do they open it up?" Because I look at the cocky and I look at the plug, I have a twist, yeah, I can see it, I had a great contractor, he did it the right way.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it just, we're in New, we're gonna get, we're gonna get cold materials of plastic.
Mm-hmm.
It is going to change what it looks like, it might look like, it might look great for a year, maybe two years, but after that, I don't know.
And the research that you did in the past two weeks?
I don't.
I'm, I'm just asking.
So that, so that there hasn't been great months of research, we've been researching documents, and we've been having conversations.
Not real world scenarios of new and then installations?
Okay, I'll tell you what, why don't you bring us materials? Show us all the materials that are gonna work in this world. You know, you're a contractor, we're a board, okay? If you have products that are supposed to do it, look like it, bring it here. We, we have people bring us, we have people bring us, you know, you know, diagrams, we have people that bring us materials of what, what our surface is going to look like so we can, we can say, "Hey, now this makes sense."
We brought you pictures of the old, and then they're.
Pictures, pictures are pictures.
Mm-hmm.
You're asking for material change, that's what you're asking us for. You're asking us to change materials, which when, when a guideline says wood and it was available, a like material. Well, I've asked you, is wood available, you said yes.
It is, but I, it's also my, it is my interpretation that PVC is a like material. It's literally meant to replace it exactly with the same exact characteristics.
But is that on a historical building? It can be, can it be?
Oh, absolutely, we use it all the time. It's, it's meant to look, if we put that up and painted it without you, we're taking a drill to it and opening up, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. If it was installed in certain corners without the proper adhesives and literally proprietary screws that put it together that plug themselves the same way that a carpenter two hundred years ago would use a screw and plug it with wood, sand it and make it disappear, same exact thing. If you use fifteen to eighteen gauge nails, the expansion and contraction through heat cycles will not, they won't stay together. That's when you'll start to get twisting and warping. It's an engineered system that is meant to do this. The gaps are meant to be, there's guidelines that we follow from manufacturers and engineers to do just this.
Is there a difference, quick, quick question, difference between just historical building or preservation building? So, does that mean that the guidelines may be different on a present, building that's preservation?
Preservation has pretty strict guidelines, right?
You know, it's, it's more, if it were an old house that weren't subject to preservation restriction or in the historic history.
This is a perfect question too, have you done buildings that are historic preservations with materials like this?
All, all, all over town, but this is a.
Not this town.
Not this town, not, not this town, yes.
So you've done historic preservation buildings with this type of material?
Yes. But, and we also are allowed new materials because if this was, you know, Ben Franklin's house, we're not gonna be able to touch it. I grew up in Marlin, we're allowed six colors at Old Town, six. I mean, that's, that's it, there's no, you can't go to a board, you can't change it, that's all we're allowed because that is by, that was set up in the rules, in the laws. The guideline has been for, it's a way for a board, not a contractor, like you said, to take this information and help with a pragmatic solution to your specific town, what fits, what's right, so that everybody can work together and obviously make things work without binding people's hands and your own and really everybody's. It's meant to say, "This is what you should do, this is how to do it." When that was written, PVC wasn't out, there wasn't, the other option would be wrapping in aluminum, you know, which is the cheapest way to do it or changing it to a vinyl wrap, the way that you see in really poor suburbs that they fix all this raw and old wood. They just cover it and that would be an example of what not to do in the guidelines. When they say like material, they're talking about what we have engineered to replace this. The same way that wood, for instance, the clad board, this, every single piece was a single piece of old road lumber. We're not gonna get, we're gonna now get mostly pre, finger jointed. They take smaller pieces and they put them together to make it look like one. Technically, by these guidelines, not legal, but this isn't a legality issue, it's a guideline on how to make it look exactly the same so that when you drive by, you don't see vinyl siding on the house, you see, "This looks like it's supposed to." There's a four inch exposure of clad board, there is a five inch flat molding with an inch and a half fan molding to look exactly the same, painted the exact same.
Well, the problem is that the, what you call a guideline is just standard for apartment interior, and it's pretty specific.
It is, I've read, I've read it all as well.
So I'm gonna read the last paragraph just because I need to read, I'm sorry that we're delaying.
It works.
Okay, so the guideline, last page, this is page nineteen, well, it's page fourteen, but it's ninety-eight of what we have. It's synthetic versus historic materials. Natural materials such as wood, glass, brick and stone are preferred building materials in historic history. These are materials historically used in construction, is appropriate to sustain materials when building renovation are expanding. Synthetic materials such as vinyl, plastic and usually aluminum are generally not appropriate. These materials frankly try to imitate natural materials but usually with limited success. Synthetic materials often look inauthentic because they do not have all the same properties as the original materials and cannot be used in the same way. Synthetic substitutes or imitation materials are often described as quote, no maintenance. Unfortunately, this means that the materials cannot be maintained. When the vinyl window or aluminum siding or plastic siding fades, chip, dent, scratch or crack, they cannot be repaired, repainted or re-painted, they can only be replaced. Synthetic materials do not age gracefully, they are disposable, most of it relatively short life expectancy, compared to the natural materials they've replaced. Vinyl, aluminum, plastic are better suited to construction, to construction that is completely rebuildable every twenty years or so. Solid composite materials such as Aztec trim or fiber, or fiber cement clad board will be considered when they can be acted on the replicate of the detailed insulation techniques of a wood side trim. The architectural, the architectural fabric of a historic district should, should be woven of wood, brick and stone and similar materials that were last generations went and probed. So there's, there's an allowance, there's, there's a description.
But it's not a historic district.
Well, even that, I agree with every word of that. Even, even if you left out the part where they specifically say it's okay, every single part of that is what I just described to you.
I, I.
Because every one of those was a cheap imitation, they tried to make it look good, it didn't work until they came out with this.
PVC.
Correct. Every, the vinyl, they're talking about vinyl and aluminum there specifically because that's what existed when these guidelines were written. They amended it with that last part about PVC and.
Don't worry, don't worry about the historic district.
But everything you just said there?
But I would, I would do this in a historic district. No, 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 you, you have to understand, this is, these are the guidelines for the Secretary of Interior, so this is part of the documentation.
And I agree with every single word of that statement you just said.
Just chill, don't get upset.
It's hard for me not to get upset.
Well, again, we're trying to negotiate through a difficult process.
Can I just bring up one other thing that happened the last time I was in front of this board, not two weeks ago, but ten years ago?
If you wanna go there.
Well, I do, and because, because the board made a statement, we were trying to restore the fireplaces and in restoring the chimneys, it was discovered that the original chimney was actually much larger than what we thought, there was a much larger chimney behind a smaller false chimney. So, we came to the board because we wanted to restore the original chimney. And what was in question was the mantle, so we were gonna completely recreate the mantle out of wood, which was inside. And the board said, "Who was I to determine the proper course of history?" In other words, the smaller chimney in front of the bigger chimney plays some historical significance. Well, maybe the upgrade of the materials on the exterior plays the same part in the history of this building to preserve it for future generations. So, who am I to determine the course of history? That's what this board said to me. I'm just trying to make the house last as long as possible in the best possible situation that it can be. And I did my homework before this, I was just like you. I said, "It makes sense to me, it should be wood." And Justin said, "It's a better material, it has the same exact profile, it's gonna look exactly the same."
We told them to call you. Go ahead, if, if you did your homework, as part of your homework requirement was to come to this board, give the information, give it thirty days to, to digest it, and then give you a response, "Yes, go ahead."
But that was what I tried to do.
No, no, you didn't, you didn't, we, this, this organization did not receive any, any information.
But that's just because I didn't know to go to the planning board first, I went to the building department first because.
Okay.
But I, we mentioned, I, we were very clear that there was a restriction and that the planning board had to be involved.
No, not, not involved, the planning board is supposed to be, the first place you're supposed to go.
But I just didn't know that.
But you went, you went through this route already once.
But I wasn't the one that initiated it, it was Carl Panal who.
I guess we could, we could spend a long time, we could spend a long time.
Guidance. Presentation to the historic commission, we'll get a report from them, they'll make a decision.
We already know, we already know exactly what they're gonna say, he was very clear, they'll never allow a modern building material.
Process, process, just because he sat there and said that doesn't necessarily mean that his board won't say, "We have to make a change, we have to be a little more flexible," and actually might make him change, who knows? Won't know until processes carry out.
And, you know, I think, the, the huge thing here is education, it truly is.
Mm-hmm. This, once again, to bring up the last article you read, it is, it is just. Even forgetting that, the, the whole point they break up about how it's, you throw it away after twenty years, every single other part is right, the vinyl windows, they don't last twenty years. My own house, I just restored a hundred and fifteen year old windows and make, they work better than new windows because I restored them, because they are, they're fixable. Every one of these products that we're talking about, you could, you can take a chainsaw to it and take a chanko and just like wood, I can repair it and make it look exactly the same. I can't do that with vinyl, I can't do that with aluminum, you have to replace it completely. Same thing with, you know, wood floors, I can fix a section of them. The new collected together ones, you have to replace the entire floor if one piece gets messed up. And it's the same with this garbage material that they speak of.
So, we're basically, we have wood on the clad boards, that's what we've created.
What's that?
We, you, you suggested wood to the clad boards, and I think that's powerful, that's what it should be, right? The question is, what are you gonna do on your ends in your, in your window trim? That's, I guess that's the question.
That, that was a compromise I thought would make everybody happy. We get the wood, which, it was my understanding that the biggest concern was about the hardy. And I apologize that I misunderstood or misinterpreted what you said last time, but seeing as that, you know, the windows are already done on the first floor, I thought that, okay, so I thought we weren't gonna go backwards with that and I thought by giving the wood for all the siding, which is what's called the body of the house, literally the bulk of everything you're seeing, that if we continue with the PVC would be agreeable and it would give us a chance to move ahead. Especially with the proven details like we showed in the pictures.
Town planner, yes. I'd love to hear from you.
Well, you know, I think it's, based on, based on the various standards and interpretations, I think, to be truly consistent with the preservation restriction, we're looking at, at what, what, you know, wood siding and wood trim. You know, I think everybody's sensitive to the fact that it's, you know, the house that's supposed right now.
Fifty-one degrees inside this morning, my temperature sixty-two.
Mine was fifty-nine.
It was a cold night, it was a cold night.
And I, I thought actually, we had talked last time, that, that you were going to bring some materials in to, to show us. It would be, you know, helpful if the board could actually see, you know, see some of these materials, the PVC. you know, helpful if the board could actually see, you know, see some of these materials, the PVC.
Yeah, I apologize, I thought that picture spoke a thousand words and if, uh, if you can see it from a foot away and you can tell when that's painted, if it's different than wood, I would be very impressed and from a hundred and fifty feet away from the street, there's not a scholar or wooden enthusiast in the world that can tell the difference. Except that it might look like it was too well done.
Nice. George, do you have a suggestion?
Well, no, the suggestion is to go to the Historic Commission to get an answer from them. We don't have a lot of discretion here, because it's a historic building, subject to their control, even though it's given us the handle. We have to get some work in from them. That's the twenty-first.
I think the Historic Commission really needs to be able to, like you said, give us a little bit more education.
We can't go around.
It's.
Yeah.
It doesn't fall into the same generic categories, historic, this is one of the preservation. So, we probably have to handle it differently.
Would it be possible to get their opinion and try to eke an unbiased opinion? Because from what I saw, they were very, very biased and made it sound like it was never gonna happen on their watch. So, we'll say, okay, if it's not, if it's not good on this place, where is it good?
So, I guess, here's the challenge. You have a lot of experience doing this sort of stuff. You have, I'm sure, a portfolio that could really demonstrate, uh, what you've, what you've done with historically preserved structures before. They might not have experience with that type of knowledge base. If you have the ability to share your portfolio and your experience in a manner that could educate help the Historical Commission appreciate what could be done. Maybe even what their, what their, um, experience has been on their interpretation, what the experience could be. That might be a positive direction to take this discussion. Does that make sense?
It does, and I guess, uh.
And I understand it's time-sensitive and it's wintertime and there's lots of stuff like that, so. Is, what's today, the fourteenth?
I do understand it's a board.
Yeah.
Am I correct in the person that was here at our last meeting, was the president of that board?
He's the chair.
The chair.
So, uh, is it also safe to say that him leading that commission has sway over every single other person in that commission?
Well, as you can see what I'm doing is.
No, 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 I appreciate that, I do.
I'm turning to my board members and I'm asking them for insight of any board, uh, chair, chairboard.
And where you, you encompass the entire town and all parts of managing that, they deal with one thing. And they're all gonna be, in my understanding, of the like mind of what these new materials are.
Again.
And to, for me to educate every one of them, I guarantee he was a woodworker, for me to educate them on woodworking, I don't think I'm gonna get very far.
Right, okay. All that we can do in life is try, all that we can for doing life is try, right?
You said right now.
Hold on, just, yeah, hold, hold on, just, just let me just. Um, and if, you, you have a week to, to do this before their meeting. And to, you know, start the dialogue and say, hey, look, I can do this type of work, these are the projects I've worked on, these are the historic preservation structures that I've used. These are the materials that I've done. To kind of embrace and develop what this is about. Again, because if you have the, the background, and we have to look at them for guys, it makes a lot more sense to have them say, hey, they have done that. We're, we're now aware that that is something that is workable for us because it's never been explained to us, then that's a whole different path you're gonna be going down.
Now, if their meeting is on the twenty-first, when is your next meeting?
December fourth.
December fourth, that'll, that puts us over a month away from when we should've fini- finished. Uh, no, no, I'm not, this isn't an argument, I'm just bringing up the point. There has to, there has to come to discussion, if we knew on the thirteenth, or had even an idea that we're gonna be going to the twenty-first, and we couldn't even make a decision until the fourth, we might've had to make a decision and pull the trigger and scrap all of this, pay the extra money, because they're gonna lose this money on their heating in this time. They're gonna lose it and lost productivity. We, we're, we're keeping them without siding for something that I, again, I apologize, it just pragmatically could've been decided or figured out before.
It, it could've been done, you could've, you could've made that decision yourself. You could've said, hey, look, we're just gonna not go, go through this process, we're just gonna do it and do it the right way. It, it could've been, that could've itself.
We thought, we thought, we thought today was that day. We didn't know the twenty-first and then the fourth were the next milestones.
No, no, I'm saying, you, you just said that you could've done whatever you want, you could've. I mean, it's, again, I have to agree with this.
No, no, I know you didn't, and I apologize, it was, we thought, okay, if we, if we stick it out another couple of weeks, so we can get a decision, whether we like it or not, that's why I came back with a compromise to do the PVC trim with the wood siding, thinking that would, uh, make everybody happy.
And you came, you came real quick with that. You came the next day.
I did.
Right, and that's, that's dynamite.
Well, because you thought that.
I thought that would completely be struck right away.
That day and just continue to work.
Yeah, because I'm trying, I mean, trying to make the board happy, trying to make my customer happy, even the historical impression for that matter, um, and hopefully show them how beautiful it can be. But at this point, I, we do have to think, two more weeks, holidays, it's, it's just a long time to leave them without it.
I appreciate that.
So, if we said right now, wood's, wood siding, wood trim, do we get the thumbs up and we can go back to work? I mean, that's not what I wanna do, but if that's.
I mean, that makes sense, because that, that's what the guidelines say, the guidelines say it's just like materials.
Okay.
You know, and then wood, wood for wood.
Sure.
I, I, the last thing I had to want, something, something to want. I guess I'm disappointed.
Well, I mean, it, it's a hundred percent the case.
It's just, it would've been nice to know, like, I mean, I wouldn't have traveled from Somerville today to find out that we weren't making a decision and that there wasn't a chance, not even one chance to make a decision until the fourth of December. It's, uh, and I'm not, you guys have been great, honestly. I felt like you were speaking pragmatically and looking towards pragmatic solutions. It seems like there's zero solution except relying on a board that has no say over his house. It is sticking to traditional woodworking values without looking to the future or new materials.
I don't know how that board would react.
I do. I do.
Well, actually, they do have a say over your house.
It's not what the unit says.
Well, it's an elderly building, it's on their website, subject to their control.
It's a, it's not considered an elderly building by the town. It's considered an el- eighteen, well, eighteen thirty, according to the assessor.
Well, the, the Form B that was submitted or prepared for the, um, preservation restriction says eighteen, or seventeen ninety-nine to eighteen oh-nine, so.
The assessor says eighteen thirty.
Well, he's also got some other information that's not correct, it shows up as his two family and it's not.
It was? That's all part of the history.
Right, but it's, it's not now and it hasn't been for, for quite some time. So, um, and, you know, I'm trying, not trying to argue either, it's just that the assessor.
I don't like your language.
It's correct.
It's, uh.
So.
But I'm just saying, I mean, Mike, look, everyone knows why that agreement was written. Because they didn't want Barry to tear the house down. So, the town thought that they could get Barry to restore the house back to the way it was. And that was the understanding when we bought the house, that that's what happened. It's not what happened. You know, the town offered it for a dollar and no one would buy it. You know, I know the story, it was empty for ten years. We've brought life back to that house and now we're being punished because we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this house. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. Almost as much on the eat.
I'm sorry that you feel like you're being punished. I didn't put the historic preservation house, I didn't, you know, I, I wasn't involved in that decision-making process or a decision-making process. The building is, is, is what it is.
There is one part of the restriction that says, that we're able to repair and maintain without the board's discretion in order to make the house habitable.
This is what you have.
I also agree that the house was not habitable.
Well, this is, this is, you know, this is not a minor repair. This is, this is.
But it's what had to be done in order to make the house.
That's okay, this is a major repair. And, and the steps that should've, again, you cannot do what was done, but, you know, to start the preservation, preservation system to come. Let it go, let it go, set it thirty days review it, make a decision and tell you what to do. That's not what happened, and so we're back to this corner. I didn't create the situation, I didn't create it. Again, I'm just trying to negotiate through it. So I guess, I guess your options are, try to, try to educate the historical.
And then still wait till the fourth to have a decision?
Well, um, if, if you feel that you can educate them, or you feel that they can buy in, and they can go with that material, then that's one path. Or if you, if you want to say, Al, we're gonna cut, you know, we're gonna.
I understand, it's still best case, though, that would, the decision to be allowed, that would be the fourth.
For you to come back to this board.
To be allowed, from their, from their opinion that's given to you, and then your decision would be the fourth.
They, they're gonna give us guidance, we're asking them.
Uh huh.
As, eh, eh, one board asks another board, that's, that's what boards do. But it's not within your wheelhouse.
And would it?
So, your other option is to do light materials.
Uh huh.
You know, and then it's, I mean.
Well, once again, it's, it's, I apologize, it was just frustrating, thinking that we were coming back for a decision, not for, uh, both of another meeting to. I hope you, I, I can understand that.
I, I can understand that you want this done two weeks ago. And I can understand that the work started on the thirteenth of October. And here we have the thirteenth of November. I understand that, I appreciate that.
What, is there more information that we could've brought to have a, made a decision today?
No. What could've done, you know, could've done.
Well, I'd like to know, I'd like to know for future reference.
Well, hold on, well, is this our only historical preservation building at the top?
Uh, it's not, there, there, there's at least one other.
Okay, so this is a learning curve for us, thanks, do we have a purview open?
Uh, I, I believe we do.
Okay, okay, good.
Um, you know, I think one thing that was discussed last week was, I believe, and I could be wrong, was providing us with some examples of work that you've done in, on projects that had preservation restrictions on them, you know, so the board could have a better.
I apologize, it was my understanding that the board was going to research this and look at examples of what this looks like installed and hundreds of thousands of applications throughout the world and in art finding. Uh, cause I can certainly produce that, I could go on Google right now and come up with hundreds of thousands of images of this installed.
I think what I think is trying to ask you is, she wants to see the particular buildings that you have been involved in.
Sure.
You know, ones that actually had preservation restrictions on them or are in historic districts.
Almost every single building in sections of Boston have these restrictions. We have to go in front of landmarks often and.
So, so what is going on here, you're accustomed, you have, you have experienced something or, uh, a process similar. I, I, you know, quite honestly, you know, we, we, we're handling this in two weeks.
Uh huh, no, you're saying, so, the way the process normally works is for things that are sort of, kind of, they call it administrative review, when things are seen so pragmatic, simple and straightforward, then this is, you know, you still have to go and, but it's pretty much a rubber stamp. Now, for things like this that if.
What's the timeframe with something like that?
Uh, adminis- administrative review is usually one week. And then now, when you have to go into a meeting every two weeks, and you have to sit just in front of a board like this, and it's, it's for things that they, it's all about precedent, it's things that have, they haven't done before. If they haven't seen this product before, if they haven't, it's, what you guys are up against now, it's just in most other places, this has become standard.
Right, and so you just had.
It's precedent, I understand that completely.
Right, and so, you know, there, there you have it.
I, it's, it's, this, it's, it's absolutely standard with these, because I've been to a bunch of them, I understand.
And they have years of experience of doing it, I understand it. But this is our first crack at, you know, historic preservation, we're going by guidelines, we read the guidelines, we just get guidelines, that lets me say, huh.
The last several paragraphs that you read.
I read one paragraph.
That's all one paragraph? And reading that gives you no sway in the direction of these are now adopted because it was amended to this entire ninety-nine page?
It wasn't amended as far as.
Okay, well, in reading all of that, that doesn't sway you to say that this is now a standard product, building product, to be used in restoration?
I don't know.
Okay, I mean, it, it seemed like it was very specific.
Again, this is not my wheelhouse.
Uh huh.
This is your wheelhouse. When you do this sort of stuff, when you come to a board like this that doesn't have that type of expertise, your job is to edu- help us, educate us to say, this is why this works.
Though, that one paragraph could not explain it better why it's, uh, it's become a standard. And the, from the guideline that we were supposed to be working from.
And again, I, we probably can see this conversation for quite some time.
Yeah, I know, I know, but we gotta let these people go.
We do. So I guess you're, if I was to look at this pragmatically, you have two options. One option is to, to go to the Historic Committee group and educate, see if they can embrace what you're telling us. Okay, and if they say, hey, this makes sense, this fits that, and you say, hey, that makes sense because you're telling us from a historical perspective, it's, that's very.
Could they have been here tonight?
They, 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 their board meets on a different night.
Could, uh, could the members, just the same way they were for the first meeting, been here, educate you and?
I don't know what members would be here.
I'm, I'm saying, could they have been here to educate you and so you could've made a decision today?
And they would've had to post a meeting to, to do that.
Because when we have to post things and they have to get, how long?
They're allowed to give up their opinion to you, right?
Not, not as board, it would be as individuals.
As individuals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless they're, unless they post.
That is definitely pragmatism, having the individuals from that board, while not in an efficient capacity, giving their opinion to this board to make a decision.
Well, when a, when one board reports to another board, the board has, they have to meet an open meeting.
Of officially, yes.
And an open meeting.
Officially, yes.
That's the same as we're out to.
Yep, I understand that.
Yeah. So I guess the other option is, if you don't wanna go through that process, then use the materials that are of light component, Martha, would we have to visit that, or would that be something that you would feel comfortable saying, that makes sense, you have to do this?
And I think as far as the materials are concerned, that it would make sense, we just need to make sure that then all the details, the profiles and everything that were on the building are being replicated.
And how do we handle the, the assets already there?
Wood on wood means wood on wood, that's essentially what it is. If you go to the Historic Commission and say, and you walked in here ten minutes ago, wood on wood. Am I mistaken when I say that?
Say that one more time?
No, about five minutes ago, ten minutes ago, you said, we'll do wood on, wood on wood.
That was me, and at this point, I'm willing to do that because I wanna get the building closed up.
Well, that takes all the problem right out of the way.
It does, except for, and not in you, I understand, but this process, and, you know, um, this isn't my money being spent, this is in my house that's completely open right now. It's frustrating for me only because I'm trying to offer an excellent product to my customer.
And again, again, I appreciate that.
Uh huh.
And you have to appreciate that we're all in a difficult situation.
Yep.
So, let's then talk about what we do with these windows that are already, they're installed. Well, the trim is already been, right, what are we doing with that?
Well, they're, the first floor windows are already installed.
The first floor trim is installed, yeah.
Oh, just the trim.
Yeah, the windows were existing, and we were replacing the casings.
Okay.
Sills and casings, as well as the band molding to match the original detail.
Exactly.
Who's the secretary for the Historical Commission?
I think it's Jen, Jen Forrest.
And the notice has to be what, for a meeting and agenda?
Uh, forty-eight hours in advance, not including holidays and weekends.
Okay, so, for you to get on the agenda, you would have to deal with the secretary for the Historical Commission, and they had to post two days before the meeting.
It would have to be posted next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so, if you wanna be on their agenda for next Tuesday, it would have to be posted by then for the twenty-first. But you have to get on the agenda, um, on Tuesday.
That'll be, uh, to them.
To be on the Historical Commission's agenda if.
That's it, that's, that's the only one go. And if that's not the only one you wanna go, then you have to figure out what do we do, what, back to what we do.
We'll take the, we'll take the plastic off and put the wood up.
That's it.
We'll take the plastic off and put the wood up. Is there any restitution from the town for the expense that I've incurred because of this, or? Is there any fund to help me with this? It's gonna cost me an additional ten thousand dollars. Minimum.
Again, the town did not.
I, I, I didn't ask, that's not, I didn't accuse the town of anything. I asked if there was any money available to help me with the situation.
The Department of Interior provides for any answer requested. But there's an application process for that.
Would you like us to investigate, I don't know?
Eric?
I'm sorry that this situation evolved the way it evolved.
I'm sorry you took this information.
This difficult discussion, it's not the intention of this board to, to make it difficult.
But the board could've just said, go ahead and finish with the materials, you've already started it, you could've done that. But I am happy now to just take the plastic off, put the wood up, and put the wood side. I need to get, I have children, I, I have to get bounce wings. If that's, if you will allow me to do that, we'll do that.
If you're putting light materials on a terrace. Similar profiles.
How do we get the building in permanent reinstated?
Martha, so, what I'm hearing, we're going to be going with wood, wood, we're gonna be removing plastic and creating original profiles. The question is, how do we get the season to cease lifted?
If the board wants to take a vote, then I could give, give Sam a, um, certificate of vote.
So I wanna understand what you wanna do, just so that we know how to, we know how to, we know how to act.
What I'm willing to do. What I'm willing to do, you know, what we want to do, what I'm willing to do, is take the plastic down and put up wood trim, wood molding, wood corner boards, and wood siding.
Matching the original.
Matching the original profile, yeah.
Martha, is there anything else that you would need for that?
I don't think so, I mean, had we, had this started, um, earlier, it would have been helpful to actually have examples of the profiles and all of that kind of stuff.
You have pictures of the original profile?
Because we took, uh, pictures of every single profile so we could recreate it perfectly.
That shows up, certainly shows up in some of them, but not, not.
Those were, those were for your consideration.
Great, so if you can provide some photographs in more detail, that would be helpful. So, I mean, I wouldn't, wouldn't hold up the vote for that.
Right, so what?
Photographs of?
Any decorative elements, what, what you.
Well, they're all off, they're all gone.
Right, but did you photograph, did you photograph?
I did.
Yeah, so you know, you know what you need to recreate?
I know what I need to recreate, I guess.
Yeah, so if you photograph, if you can provide those photographs, so that we have them as a record.
And that can recreate, then our obligation will be fulfilled, we stand to be held.
Hmm.
Okay, um, so that's what the applicant would like to proceed with, I understand your agreement, okay? Then I would entertain a motion.
Um, a motion to allow Mr. D'Angelo to move forward with light products.
Which includes?
Wood.
The trim, the clavores.
An additional, um, visuals to, to see what the original looked like.
And also remove the PDC trim that's been installed.
This being under your purview, you have your own records, right?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Of pictures, you have your own records since this property is under your purview, since you're the protectors of it?
We don't have, we don't have pictures of what was there before anything was taken down.
Okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
Sorry.
Any other further discussion on the motion, on the motion, on your favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, great, we have a direction.
All right, thank you.
So I'll provide Sam a direct vote tomorrow, thank you.
Okay, um, I apologize for our delay on the public hearing, but we will now continue our public hearing for the site plan review of Governor Academy French Student Center renovation, three point four Middlewood Road map, R fifteen Lockport, and I'm an applicant for Governor's Academy.
Please stop these. Uh, there's two additional full-size, two additional storm waters, and then five old by seventeens.
It's similar.
Uh, I am Paul Avery with Oak Consulting Group, representing Governor's Academy. We have Tom Woodruff, who's with Governor's Academy, and, uh, Josh with, uh, TMS Architects. We were here a month ago and, um, had some few comments from the board. We also received a comment letter from Joseph Waka. Uh, we had acknowledged and generally talked about how we'd respond to it, but hadn't had enough to actually do it. We have subsequently done that, um, and gotten a letter back with my, we've got it, that says that everything has been addressed. I could walk very quickly through what the resulting plan changes are. They aren't many, there was a crosswalk that was suggested was added here, where we have the new handicap spaces. That was actually on the boards I presented last week, although it wasn't on the record drawings. We revised the rain garden details, um, I actually have a landscape plan here. There, there were some questions about the planting, and we probably can't look at this chat by eleven seventy, but basically, we took it and there were suggestions about different types of plants that might be more tolerant for high moisture conditions. And we sort of incorporated, hence the actual planting for the rain garden area is now becoming part of the landscape plan, and, uh, it's reflected accordingly. We clarified that there are area drains in the patio, which will tie into the storm drain system. Uh, we brought our site lighting shown on the site plan, consistent with the, uh, architectural plans. Uh, the limit of work has been adjusted to include some staging areas, and, um, that's pretty much it. Uh, there were some questions about public safety with the Dupree Fire Department, and the Governor's Academy agrees, um, to work with the fire department and put in, uh, a second FDC for the sprinkler system, uh, if we need to, and, uh, a BDA radio booster system. So, um, other than that, we did see draft conditions of approval, read through them, and I think we're fine with all of that, the only thing that we did wanna talk about was the hours of work. We have a compressed schedule that I judged, do you wanna talk about that, or?
Yeah, so, um, two concerns the contractor had, the hours restrictions. Um, one was the starting of site work, uh, later than the rest of the trades. Um, their goal is to kinda start everything on the site around seven AM, which ties actually nicely with Governor's Academy's schedule for activities. Uh, so they can kinda get everybody in that site and start working. Uh, and then another point was, they'd like to have the ability to work inside the building whenever they need to for hours. Being in England and having to start this project in March, you know, we're, we're sure to hit some sort of adverse weather conditions. And have to, uh, either work on the weekends or have certain trades stay late on the interior of the building to kind of make sure everything's height. So, um, we just wanted to make sure there weren't any restrictions that would kind of hinder them adjusting that on the fly.
Right, I think it would be any concerns because there really are no others, you are the others. Uh, and if your community is fine with what's gonna be going on, I don't think that we would have any objection to that at all.
Great, thank you.
That's easy.
Yeah.
Did the fire department have a question about the turnaround of the parking lot or not clear spaces or clear lanes?
No, we didn't get that question.
I'm just curious, okay, that's good.
Martha, do you have any concerns?
Uh, I don't. Um, and there was, there, as I noted when I sent this to you, there were a few, um, a few conditions that were carried over from, um, the Presby Site Plan Review, um, decision. Uh, one was a stabilized construction entrance, um, I left that in here, I'm not sure that that's something that's even really needed.
I mean, typically, we put the detail in for those, like, you know, applicable, and this case, point plant's gonna just didn't bother to, it's just, it is sort of, due to it's implausible.
Right, so that might be a condition that would be appropriate to, to take out, actually. If the board is comfortable with that.
Yes. Here we go. Yep.
So going back to the hours, then, you know, what it reads, um, for the site work is eight to five, and Monday through Friday, hours of construction for their activities should be seven to six, Monday through Friday, and work on Saturdays or Sundays, so, um, is it, so what hours would you like to have stipulated? And is it your thought that there would be work from time to time on Saturdays and Sundays?
The, the goal was to not work Saturdays and Sundays, but as Josh mentioned, the, the construction, say, the schedule's pretty tight. We're trying to, planning to achieve occupancy by the start of the next school year in twenty twenty. Um, so having that option would be, I think, really beneficial for, for the project.
That would include outside work too, I mean, inside work would seem to be okay, right?
I, I don't see why anybody would have objection to inside work, other than the faculty member who lives in the building, and they're well aware of the project and willing to live through its noise and whatnot, but.
Yeah, the, the hours aren't as much of a big deal for the exterior work, um, or have the ability to work late, cause you wouldn't wanna be working in the dark outside and stuff.
Right, right.
But the ability to have them working on, on the weekend would be, uh, something that would be beneficial. They lose long too many days early in the project to rain or snow, uh, we have some kind of site component here.
Actually, are you thinking Sunday work or not Sunday work?
They just have it be flexible, as flexible as possible.
Okay, so do we wanna?
You have to get a note from the faculty.
We have to at least communicate. I think, I mean, I think if, if it's reasonable, no restrictions would be, would be great if you're willing to go there. I think we have enough, um, relationship with the community, you know, the faculty that live on campus, that we would make sure we were not, you know, ruffling anybody's feathers or making any waves there. Uh, they would be the only members of the community that would have any objections to it, and if you thought that was gonna be the case, we'd avoid it.
So, we can just, I mean, we could just, how's the construction? Keep learning, uh, upgrading, uh, visual, uh, site work and earthwork shall not be restricted. Are you comfortable with that?
I would do that, take out the, take.
Take out the paragraph?
Take out the paragraph altogether.
So, why don't we just take out the paragraph D?
So, basically, it's.
It's yours.
It's yours.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on conditions, folks?
Yeah.
Yes?
No. So, you were reading D and H?
Yep.
And no other, no other concerns?
Nope.
Just gonna check here. Um, and then you had asked in your email clarification on stakeout requirements for the pre-construction meeting. And I think it's probably, you know, this was an issue with the Presby because of the slight amount of tree clearing that was gonna go on in the sensitive area, not so much here, but it may be to your benefit to control the situation, to make sure that the limits of work are well, well-defined.
Is it just like the limits of work, like, around the site, or is it, do you want the kind of patio and pathways and grades staked out?
Um, no, I think it's just the limit of work around the site, so, and, and in place where work activity will be going on, and also where any storage will be taking place.
Yeah, uh, the contractor just wants to make sure that, again, because of the tight schedule, that when they call the pre-construction meeting, everything's out there.
As you expect to see, and it's not, you come out and say, okay, well, I needed to see this, so, you know, now it becomes another week of, of get surveys and stuff.
Right, right, understood.
So if we mark out the, the work area, and that would be sufficient?
I think so, I mean, I don't, I don't see any, any need to, like, stake out the quarters of the patio and stuff like that, unless the board would like to see that.
I think it's, I'm sorry, just the room, it's, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
And does that work, is just the construction fence in, when they put the construction control fence up?
Sure, that's, that's fine.
Are there any drainage areas on the property?
Um, well, there's, there's some underground drainage, and there's the rain garden.
Okay.
So, all of that will be included.
The nice thing about this site is it's small and there's landmarks, and so it's really obvious exactly where everything is gonna go with respect to the site work, so, it's pretty easy. As opposed to, you know, unclaimed area where you don't really know where you are, so.
Right, right, yes, yeah, it's a very different site than, than the other one that we were dealing with previously. Um, any, any other comments on the description of the project or anything like that, if at all, so?
It seems good, check the numbers and they seem right.
Okay. So I don't know if the board, um, you know, typically, the board will go through the, the decision criteria, just to make sure that they've been satisfied. And then here on page four of A in the decision, and then I did include the, um, site plan and due information, so they start basically at the top of page three.
So, starting with the site plan review. Second report, uh, operation maintenance plan. We have our engineering letters review. From Joe Somarco, dated fourteen of October, thirty-first.
Yeah.
And then we have engineering response letters from Paul Avery Oak Consulting, dated the fifteenth of October, and the twenty-eighth. And then we have a letter from, uh, Chief, uh, Department of Fire Department, dated the eleventh of October. And then we had a letter from, uh, Chairman Howard, Chair of the Newbury Historical Commission, dated the eleventh of October as well. Finding and approving the site plan review application, the board finds that the proposed project will constitute a suitable development based on the performance with all criteria A through N set forth in chapter ninety-seven, nine A. Six decision criteria, the proposed plan is designed to work with the existing parathyke, will minimize the volume of cut and fill, will not require the removal of trees of six inches in caliber or larger. Uh, the new patio will not, will displace no wetlands or vegetation, provide adequate controls to minimize soil erosion, will not create, you know, water pollution, and will not affect traffic. The proposed plan does not require removal of any stone walls or property boundary walls. It does have adequate stormwater management, uh, the proposed relocation of the student drop-off, uh, pickup in the hockey rink parking lot, inclusion of a new traffic permit, student drop-off and pickup, and the relocation of accessible, uh, parking spaces, construction of the E A compliant barrier for walkways to the building to maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles both on the site and entering onto an aggressive front end. It's adequate access of structure, uh, to provide appropriate fire safety. The proposed renovations will not impact scene views from publicly accessible location. Visibility of parking, storage, and other outdoor service areas will be appropriately controlled. The intrusion glare from headlights and site lighting that surround properties will be minimized. All the proposed addition is consistent with character materials and scale of building, the vicinity, and the view about public ways and places. Continuing the stormwater management system is designed to prevent contamination of groundwater. Additionally, the appearance of the property will enhance the proposed landscaping and other site improvements. Conditions regarding levels of construction activity and lighting have been placed on the proposed use to minimize that impact to adjacent properties that are.
So they might actually wanna modify that one?
Wanna just move that?
Um, if there is a condition regarding the lighting not being screened, but we could believe the reference to construction activity.
Okay, I'll let you, you can clean up. Uh, the proposed project complies with the provisions of Newbury's zoning bylaw, or applicable for educational use. Uh, conditions of approval. A, site plan approved by the planning board shall not be constructed as approved from any other board, commission, official, or department. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all required approvals and permits for the proposed project. B, the approval is contingent upon final approval by all other loaded boards, commissions, and agencies of the town. Any approval which imposes conditions inconsistent with the site plan approval shall require a revision of the site plan. A request for such revision must be submitted right into the planning board. C, lighting the site, all lighting, all site lighting installed in the property shall be shielded to prevent spill over. Project site, uh, we will change, uh, E to D, continue that. Um, next will be, there will be no tree or tree trunk chicken grinding on the site, all trees cut down. Project shall be removed from the site, stump grinding may be allowed on site pending review and approval by the planning board. The need for an extent of stump grinding will be reviewed at the pre-construction meeting. Continuing a pre-construction meeting with a town planner and planning board's engineer consultant shall be held prior to the next. shall be held prior to maximum site work. Limited work shall be clearly state prior to the pre-construction conference. Next, we have the applicant shall provide the town planner with a detailed construction schedule at or before the pre-construction conference and shall notify the planner of any changes to the schedule as site work and construction proceed. Continuing, a material and storage, equipment storage. A material and equipment storage area shall also be included in the swift of the project's part of the construction documentation. Final location will be determined with input from select contractor and shall be shown on construction plans. Next, we have specific information regarding the planting and light, site lighting shall be provided to the town planner for administrative review and approval when final selections are made as part of the construction documentation. Continuing from time to time, the planning board or its agent or representatives may enter and inspect the premises subject to this decision, excluding the building on the site to assure, excluding the building on site, to assure that any work done on the site is compulsory with approval of site plan and if not, to take any action the planning board deems appropriate to encourage compliance in all respects and to enforce compliance of, if necessary, all and sole discretion of the planning board. Next would be at the discretion of the building commissioner with the concurrence of the planning board, recording of the certification of the town clerk of the decision on the site plan review with the Southern Essex Richard deed may be included as an additional condition. 我现在是 building permit, continuing modifications, any modifications. Two, the approved site plan with required planning board approval, request for modifications shall be submitted to board in writing and shall in most cases be subject to the same supplemental review and hearing procedures as well as was the original filing. Next, duration of site approval. Site approval of this project lasts in two years. From the date of issuance, not including time required to pursue or await termination of appeal per two, law, chapter four, eighty eight, eighteen seventeen. Unless approved, construction shall have been commenced and proceeded in good faith continuously to completion except for cause in such requests, in such a case, extension for the date of completion shall be submitted to the planning board. Those are the conditions of approval. Any modifications or conditions? I agree. Town Planner? Okay, I would love to take a motion.
To approve the site plan approval application?
To, yeah, to approve the site plan approval decision as a reminder.
And the amendment will be what?
Ah, to delete those two conditions.
To the H and D? Excellent. Excellent, and the second?
Second.
Discussion. Favorite? All right, great. Well done.
So I will make those changes tomorrow and then you all can, probably stop by and sign it. And when that's done, I'll report it or I'll, I'll file it with the town clerk. And that will start the twenty day appeal period. So it starts the day after it's, it's filed. And it's twenty calendar days.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. All right, we'll see you again for the next one.
Sounds good.
Continuing our agenda, we're going to go back to our financials. So I think we're going to head up on our financials for our next meeting. I think T R found without a whole business, primary subdivision found for sixteen.
So you have, you have in your packets, you have your original request and agreement from Edie Jackman as trustee of the sixty eight Greenstreet Realty Trust to extend the timeframe for the planning board to take action on this until December twenty third. The reason for this, the engineer is still making some changes to the drawings. And I'm still, need to get some feedback from the fire department on the, on the cul-de-sac. So the thinking here is that our, the board's next meeting is December fourth, fifth. After, maybe after that is the eighteenth. So between those two meetings, hopefully, a decision will be made and it will be reported up to December twenty third. File with the clerk until then. So the board would need to go to basically accept this request for extension.
I would like to make a motion to bring this back on the date on that.
Well, it's actually to extend the timeframe for the board to make, take action on it until December twenty third.
To extend the timeframe to take action until December twenty third.
So I got a great discussion. All right, all better?
All right.
Okay, continuing along from chapters sixty one, eighty, little land notes intended to sell to seven seven I wrote.
All right, so the board hasn't really had any discussion about this yet. Just as a reminder, December tenth is the public hearing that the selector will be holding on this at seven fifteen, which is the same night as we're also discussing the golf center next. And the considerations really are whether, whether the acres that are in chapter sixty four and eighty have any potential municipal use. So might be valuable for the town to acquire or if it has conservation use, whether the board might want to recommend that it be transferred. The right of first refusal, refuse, sorry. Oh, because we had a grant application today, so I'm a little, a little spacing here. Whether it would make sense to assign the right of first refusal to a nonprofit such as Essex County Greenbelt or whether it seems fine to let the sale proceed.
Do we have any indication of anything in this one?
Um, not really. We have gotten a, a letter from the Conservation Commission. They have reviewed it and determined there are no wetlands or other natural resources on, on those acres that would make it valuable from their conservation point of view. So they, they have no concerns having the sale move forward. So.
Hasn't been noticed in any way to the Conservation Groups, you're in?
Um, I've had a conversation, been a preliminary conversation with the land acquisition director at Essex County Greenbelt.
Okay.
And I did also send something to the trustees, but I have not heard back from them.
There was no deadline given to them?
Um, there was, there was, yeah. Yeah, and I'll be having a follow-up with Essex County Greenbelt on it, but that hasn't been scheduled yet.
Okay. All right.
So we should, if, if there's not going to be any discussion of it tonight, then I'll just ask that you all really think about this and we should discuss it at the December fourth meeting. That's going to be the last opportunity and, and prepare written recommendation to the selectmen for the public hearing.
And if anybody has any comments or concerns to get them to you?
Yes, yes.
That's what we should do. Zoning amendments, a freedom of wireless communication.
That was just, I have received a proposal from, well, I had a conversation and I received a proposal subsequent to that with David Maxim at Isotro. And since it hasn't been reviewed yet, I want to discuss it with Tracy. And I haven't included it in your packets tonight, but what it does just briefly, it includes a review of our existing bylaw. They do a computer modeling of coverage in town and then as an optional activity, which I think would probably would be worth, again, as part of the proposal, they do a drive-through.
Okay, to check.
Check.
Signals.
Signals for all four major barriers. So I think it, it seems pretty, pretty thorough. And he has actually, he's familiar with the town. He worked with the CBA when there was a sub-town proposal before that.
Okay.
A number of years ago, so it's familiar territory to him.
All right, some more to follow.
More to follow.
All right, I'm looking under new business and I see the word nut next to it. Is that an accurate reflection?
I would say that's an accurate reflection.
Excellent, excellent. And then continuing along the agenda, our town planners report?
Um, yeah, short and sweet.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't, don't really have anything for tonight.
Okay, that is a very true to the board. These are of course, board of selectmen. To have one, do we?
Well, I did, for the first time in two years. There was, all of this was the review after the building committee.
Right, right. The, the major thing was the building committee did make a recommendation. They met before the selecting ceremony and, as I can say in the email, and made a recommendation to the selectmen to accept a little bit of AC construction based on due diligence that was done by the police chief, town administrator, Vortex and the architect contacts.
Planning board does appreciate the efforts of all the different boards and different committees and different individuals involved in giving this, this project to the finish line through our company last night. And I think that everyone should definitely acknowledge. Conservation Commission, I think that our meeting's going to be next week. ZVA. I don't think we would be having a ZVA report tonight.
I don't think so.
Okay, NVVC.
Really nothing, nothing unitary for it.
We'll, we'll have our follow-up meeting with.
Actually, I just got an email.
Right, came in this afternoon?
This, late this afternoon, so they're suggesting we find another date. Contact you, yeah.
Anything else to discuss?
I'm comfortable.
Would it make sense to appoint Leslie as a liaison instead of Martin? You don't like it?
I usually go to all the meetings, so I'm fine with that.
It's fine with me. I'm there too, but.
Well, George, I think you just.
You can tag team if you need to.
I, I moved to appoint Leslie as our liaison to the board of selectmen.
I guess, I guess the second one, huh?
Yep.
Any discussion?
None.
Excellent, and the baton is passed. That's right, you can keep it. All right, great, thank you.
Hi.
Thank you, beautiful. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So?
So, okay, great.